And so, last year we kind of, you know, looked at these goals again and looked at and set some new ones. And we did that, I believe, in August.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I think in August would be a time that we look at start setting some new goals. And so, kind of that August one, I, we don't necessarily approve them in August, but we try to get a good idea. And so, that's one thing to, you know, start thinking about things that you would like to see and, um... Because from last year to the previous year till last year, we didn't change that we kind of kept kind of the same core three. Um, so, just kind of something that I start thinking about and, um, then we can bring those to, um, the meeting in August and discuss them. And Dr. Crandall, if you had any thoughts that Rena, you brought up several different items.
Yeah, I actually think the three goals are good. I just think we could be a little more specific about, you know, what, what we want to measure. You know, how, how we're measuring our progress to those goals.
And maybe that's, and maybe that's what the discussion will be. So, it'll be nice to have that discussion in August and try to nail things down a bit. And then, um, you know, I don't know if we necessarily have a firm will approve them or an adoption of them. Then we can start, you know, give those to Dr. Crandall's, you know, working, you know, list to do things in September. So, it's a good start to the year.
It is, it is.
It would be nice to have that at the beginning of the year for a district focus and share with our staff.
All right, so we will discuss in August. Okay, eight point three, bond update.
Uh, so that's in your, in your folders there, just starting with security and technology. So, we got some cabling done and that was to, uh, doing some updating cabling with our, our stations. We moved one of the, uh, stations and so that was in that area. Um, re-roof, we got that one taken care of. Um, I don't know, I know Ms. Lori and I walked in once and Mr. Nelson and I walked in once when it was raining. And when we walked out of the auditorium, we found out it was really raining. It's more of just a hum where Ms. Hennessy was in there as well. Um, and if you're in there when it's coming down, the show can go on. If you get out into our entryway, it's hard to hear each other. So, uh, the change in our insulation and roof design is, which was the intention of why we did it in the first place, was real positive effect and so pleased with the outcome.
The leak was repaired, yeah?
There was a leak and that was repaired, yes. It was a small one fortunately, so.
So, that was over, so it was over like eleven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, was there any significant reason why? Do we, I mean, it just, at least it says that on here. I don't know.
Can I make that? So, we divvied up these buckets very arbitrarily. So, what I do, and I didn't catch that till just now, that like if you will notice on the, um, bus garage, I transferred money from one project to another just to kind of even out. So, I will do that so that ensures we don't go over that total bond amount. But I will transfer some probably from the deferred maintenance or the FFE. Because when we did some of the other projects, we didn't really spend out of each bucket strictly. Some of the FFE ended up for Science, ended up getting deferred to Science or whatever. So, I'll do a transfer of twelve thousand dollars to cover that. It says start, it's just our buckets internally, it's not any bank transfers or anything.
Okay. Similar to the, uh, the next one where we have something active was in our deferred maintenance. On the next page, uh, and a couple of different things there. Some of her associated with the roof projects, some of are associated with, uh, a lot of the, as you can see, the flooring. You know, uh, some rental pieces there, home center, waste, which would be dumpster and such.
Can you remind me what FFE is?
Furniture fixtures.
Thank you.
That's pretty what it is. Yeah. And nothing new in there, speaking of which. And then we had our last bills, uh, taking place there for Max Gray and ARI, uh, for Science Lab and Cullin Air Air.
So, back to technology, the Aptigie, that's the newer?
Yes.
How, how?
Oh, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Dorr.
How are we doing with that?
We have, uh, the goals to make sure this rolled out by August twenty-sixth, which is the first Monday of, uh, our teacher workshops. And we have a small group of, there's, uh, various levels of users on the app. So, there are a few people that will have total control over moving things around. And then there'll be some that'll be scaled back. And then they'll be, um, like a coach or a teacher who might want a story posted and they'll post it. And then they'll either get it approved or, or not by whoever their admin is that they report to. So, next week, uh, I believe Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, we have four of us that are going to have a, a training with the Aptigie guy. He's going to spend about an hour with us and he's going to make sure everybody knows the ins and outs. And then basically behind the scenes, what we can do right now is play around with it. It's very user friendly, it is made for a phone. It's, it's, I'm just impressed and I'm usually not. So, um, then he'll, he'll go through all of the ins and outs with us. Then we'll have our team of four or five, um, core people. And then from there, we'll decide who do we want to assign the next level of usership, so to speak. And then, um, start getting the word out to the public through the paper and the radio and stuff like that. And then we'll have a rollout date and people can go on, get the app for free, put it on their phone. You can do everything from push notifications for, um, activities that change to, um, my lunch account, to school news, to elementary, to, you can do a lot with it. And so, this way, parents can subscribe to the things they want and not necessarily get some of the things that maybe, maybe they don't have an interest in. So, um, we're pretty excited about it.
Well, it looks like our funds, you know, they're going to go in there. So, I'm-
For the bond.
The bond, for the bond, sorry. Um, so, we're, we're sitting good with all of the projects and the things that we want.
Yep, in motion.
And we've made final payments to ARI, okay?
Max Gray.
And Max Gray.
And Cross Anderson, they'll be coming. We actually had some discussion with them this week. We have some credits coming in, so they're ready now to put forth the, the final pay culture on that.
The floor looks great.
Yeah, it looks really nice. It looks really great.
We've won the, the high school hallways, you have to be dumped, but it will be in that gray.
Looks nice.
Yeah, it's very nice.
So, it's worth noting out, even though that particular bill isn't on this agenda, but since the payment to Max Gray is on the bond report, you know, we had talked about a dequited damage assessment, you know, with their representative and that ultimately was negotiated and assessed. And that system number is minus that number.
Is that, okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you, that's why I was just wondering.
It's about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. Great, anything else on, on stuff? All right, eight point four to approve the expenditure revenue report, June twenty nineteen.
And-
So, would you like to-
Presented to you through a year, eight point four, you have-
I don't know how much you want to hear. Um, as you notice, it says through June because July's numbers, I'm not really paying a lot of bills that are related to July. So, I pay bills in July, but they still hit the June, uh, expenditure revenue because there's a lot of things that are related to last year's fiscal year. And so, I carry this forward until I do what's called a close of our accounts. And then the July numbers start making sense and looking at, um, next year. So, um, I got a little bit more to work on with the auditor. We've been working remotely together and then I'll work on that first close and then I'll be able to include a July report. But right now, if I ran July, it would look really messy. So, um, you can tell that there's like, um, I, when I look at it, I still have things encumbered and ready. Yet, you know, there's some POs still open from last year. So, as those close and get paid out, these numbers will keep updating. And I'll probably be through August or September before I close this pack. But I think we're on track, we're on track to do what we said, what spend, what we spent, said we would spend.
Yeah, great. Any other questions, Lori, otherwise I need a motion to work.
What should you approve, expenditure?
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, uh, eight point five, eight point five is to approve the propane bid.
And if you look at your packets, uh, you have Superior Fuel, but you also hand out an updated one. We're going to make sure we have all the costs and so the one in the book or in your packets is actually, you can use the, the handout. And so, we have the Superior Fuel and the Como. Uh, main difference there is number two on the Superior Fuel, they have a eight hundred dollar per year service vaporizer tank, uh, parts not included, where we don't need that, correct?
Como has the same, has the same agreement. They didn't, they didn't want to put that in and have the bids be part. So, Como would be the exact same, eight hundred dollars to service the vaporizers with, um, parts extra.
Does anybody happen to know what our consumption is? Because we've got a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons.
Last year, we burned a hundred and twelve thousand. So, we ended up paying a little extra because we went a hundred and ten thousand. So, that last, that last bill, we ended up paying, not above and beyond. I mean, it's not, wasn't a lot, but, but nonetheless, we want to cover ourselves, so.
Um, do you happen to have like, well, we have the bus garage, which is maybe new or, do you happen to know like the, like five-year trend is?
In bus garage, we, I think the last two years, it's been right around thirty-five hundred dollars to eat that.
Mm-hmm. And that's on a separate-
That's on a separate, but right now Como, it was North Shore, that, that had that. So, which essentially is Como.
Mm-hmm.
And, so, right now, it's not even necessarily pending if they receive a bid or not. But I've been told we can, through Como Oil, get the bus garage for under a dollar again.
So, okay, so this hundred and fifteen and hundred and twenty thousand gallons is not including what we need at the bus garage?
No, that's just, that, that covers the stool and the YMCA.
Got you, okay. Is there any particular reason why we have that all tied in to the same bid? Like what we use over there?
We could, except for we, it's a transport that comes here and they fill the bus garage with the bobtails, so.
Does it seem like a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons is like our high end? Or is there a risk of over, over the highest?
By, by nature, I mean, dictates that.
Last year was a cold year too.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, like over the last like several years, like is-
No, that's, that's, this is typically the bids that have come off Superior. For the two years, I think they've bid it, they've bid a hundred and fifty thousand, Como's bid a hundred and twenty.
Sure.
So, they're, they're just covering us on a, on a whole bridge of-
And there's no guarantee, it's not like an eighty-twenty or something like we're guaranteed that we have to get like eighty percent of that hundred and fifteen. It's just like whatever we happen to buy.
Right, I mean, so they have a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand gallons set aside at that price.
True, true.
Great.
And you recommended Como, correct?
I would recommend Como, um, both great companies. Either way, we're going to save twenty-four thousand dollars based on that hundred and twelve thousand gallons we use. Um, the only difference is, is Como's right down the street, should we have a problem. Last year, Superior filled us every time, you know, not an issue, I don't have a bad word to say about them. But I think just for our safety net, having, having a service guys down the street, I would recommend we go with Como.
Okay. So, we do have a recommendation from administration, so. Any other questions, otherwise somebody would like to make a motion?
I guess I can make a question that, um, we accept Como, Como's bid, uh, for fuel oil for the coming season, as presented.
Thank you.
Second to that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Uh, so, if this would constitute a change in vendors, is there like some additional fee regarding like swapping out tanks or something like that?
We, we own, we own the tank. Um, so, Como will now come in and they'll put in their dialer, um, because we want to keep help. And so, they'll put the dialer at no cost.
And is there any cost of like removing the equipment that the other company has that we know?
Hmm, not that we know of, but that, based on the contract we signed with them last year, there wasn't anything in there. They, they installed for free, so.
Got you.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Eight point six to approve renewal of membership to the Minnesota State High School League for twenty nineteen, twenty. And then we also need to appoint a board member to represent the school.
Wasn't the board member last year there, Rick?
Carrie?
Carrie, yeah, Carrie.
Are you sure it was Carrie?
So, you know how busy you were?
I, nothing. Right. Never it was even me.
But you are prepared, I mean, if something doesn't-
Yeah. So, we have to appoint somebody again? Okay. So, the information is in our packet, eight point six.
My apologies for being late, but I got up at three o'clock this morning to get here and this is, I just do my-
Thanks, thanks for making it up. Good to have you.
And now, looking at you, you can see what we're hauling.
Um, Mitch, do you want to, um, we do this every year, this is something we have to do every year. We also have to appoint a board member, um-
Yes.
Okay. The piece right here.
You know, just to speak to the high school league, this is, this is what sanctions all our activities and gives us a governing body over them. Um, one thing we should do in August is there is a video, um, that the high school league puts out while we play. You should receive that if you haven't and watch that. And then we could chat about that for five minutes. But really, the high school league is, um, we're really pushing for, um, increased participation statewide in all activities and to get, to get kids to feel a part of their communities. And so, it's, you know, we're going to education-based activities is some of the terminology we like to use. And so, high school league's been very active, they've been very supportive of us. And they've been particularly very supportive of me and my role as the assistant principal and the activities director. I know we don't see it upfront, but they've been a tremendous help to my, to myself, so.
Mr. Johnson, can we take that roll on again?
Okay. If you need to do something, I'd like to- Okay, and then, so then I need a motion to approve that.
I made the motion to approve the membership to the Minnesota State High School League. And appointing-
And appointing member Janson to represent the school, thank you. I thought I needed some cut.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, eight point seven to approve renewal of MREA, Minnesota Rural Education Association membership.
That's a eight point seven document in your packet, uh, so Minnesota Rural Education Association, they do a lot of lobbying for rural districts. They're going to be approving the long-term facilities maintenance. And without MREA, we will not be getting the funding that we do get. That's one of the big things that they've done the last few years. And also a lot of those board approved operating reference, local operating reference. And that's, uh, something that they would have a hand in. Yeah, they're just an outstanding organization. They provide us with a lot of support. If there are any issues that we have, they ask us. Uh, when they say us, you know, MREA comes to superintendent meetings. And if there's any topics that I've heard at our board level, I bring those forward. They bring us information as far as what's going on legislatively, um, that we need to be aware of and made aware of and, you know, communicate with either legislators or, or the, the downwinds.
And they, much like NSBA, they send out an email blast quite often with a lot of really valuable information. So, um, if anybody's interested, I see that, I receive those and it's like Dev receives those emails. She's on their list. And so, I, anybody else, if you'd like that, I mean, you can, um, subscribe. Um, they do a lot of, you know, give you legislative updates and things, they've got a lot of good information.
And they have some awards, we go nominate some of our teachers for their awards and such as well.
So, I need a motion for the, for the approval of their renewal.
Approve, uh, renewing membership and MREA.
Can you hold second now? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, eight point eight to designate the identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system as superintendent Crandall.
So, that's the Iowa, which is the identified official with authority. Um, what that is, is for example, we have, um, different reports that have to go out, the different financial pieces. So, uh, these are all reports, secured reports that, and that bases through MDE. So, Lori needs access to them, ARC needs access, uh, activities director, as principals, they get secured reports. Uh, they'll look at the data specific to our district and I give the authorization. You know, our specialty co-op. And so, when someone needs that, I give the request, I put it into the system and make the request.
So, I make a motion to designate the identical, identi-, to designate the identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system to be-
Grand Row.
Superintendent Crandall.
Okay. Okay. I would have just done that from a point. Okay, any, um, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Um, just as a side note, Lori, did you put the time that Dev came in?
I did.
Thank you, sorry. Sorry. No, we just, we just need to note that and I didn't write it down, I realize, so, okay, sorry. Back on track. All right, eight point nine to approve ARC's contract for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And ARC stands for ARCAD, Regional Computing Consortium.
Uh, there's a document in here, uh, gives the trend, or actually just the last couple of years, two thousand eighteen, nineteen amount into two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, for upcoming year. Uh, the percentage changed there of a point eight or two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. And they're a valuable resource and Lori, she's been down there already a few days. I've been there the last two days, uh, for training myself. And yet, they're just a valuable resource in helping us with a lot of our HR, um, benefits in HR, payroll in HR. There's some new law changes, um, and such. And so, they, they do a lot for us, very valuable resource. Recommend that we continue working with them.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the ARCC contract for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, so this is mostly like central kinds of functions?
Yes, they, they represent thirty-one, thirty-three, somewhere in there, um, school districts. They work with us in a variety of areas. They also provide trainings and such. Lori, I don't know if you want to expand on that or-
Um, they also run like IT key in all of our panel, but they're the ones that run the file and send the ACH file and some of those functions that we would struggle, I would think, to do ourselves because they have the expertise and the setup. Um, the new wage, that's a lot. I spent a day in training about that with all the disclosures we have to provide and stuff. Um, their group helps design the software that I use so that I can do those and then they teach us the software. So, pretty invaluable for me.
They help us, uh, year in and-
And audit.
Start up, uh, all of that materials.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Eight point ten to adopt the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities.
And that is in your, uh, packet as well. Uh, basically, any monies that are associated with our kids, which are our student activity accounts. And that could be for, you know, sports, drama club, whatever it happens to be, they need to run through the school district. And that's what this is all about. So, if they are outside the school district, they need to be, and this is legislatively-
It's a law change.
Yeah.
Um, all the school districts are doing it kicking and screaming just because it's going to make, ARC is going to help us put all the balances in. I got to create codes now inside of our smart software for every activity account, revenue and expenditures. Um, it'll get captured in the general fund, but as an assigned amount to assign to student activities, so.
Yeah, nobody's losing, none of the accounts are losing any funds or anything. And what happens is the process is running through the school district.
Okay.
So, that's like the letter of the law. What's the spirit? Why, why was that?
Accountability.
Yeah.
Someone wasn't using the funds appropriately. Probably many people aren't using the funds appropriately. So, they want to bring it under the school district's jurisdiction so that accountability is present.
Okay, so we should be, that's kind of what the hope is that we'll, we'll provide is just a little bit more oversight. And then as far as our role, what we'll see is like, is that just going to be like, do I approve the bills?
You'll now see checks that are student activity related.
Yeah, okay.
And there are guidelines for what student activity funds are allowed to provide for us.
Got you.
All right.
Or work.
You're super important. All right, so I need a motion to adopt this resolution.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities.
I will second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the resolution passes. Eight point eleven to approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan.
Uh, you have a, you have one in your packet, but it's very much easier to read-
Yeah.
The one provided to you. And so, this is, it's, it's a long-term plan. As you can see, it's, uh, spread out to two thousand twenty-nine. Really looking at, uh, for the board's eyes, you, look at the next three years. It has last year's and then the next few years. And you can see what we have planned, our funds going into, uh, the top category one. Those are pretty standard. We do things all the time for physical hazard, others, hazards, materials, um, health and safety, fire safety, indoor air quality. Those are, those are ongoing pieces that Mr. Nelson works with. And so, he helped formulate, he knows how much it's going to be for what we need for fire safety, what we need for, um, different areas. You can see, for example, if you look under, uh, finance code three five eight, which is the best- You can see, for example, if you look under Finance Code 358, which is the best asbestos, you can see that we've got those three years and then the fourth year, 2023, but then it drops off. He knows that our buildings have been pretty well cleaned up. And that, that may even change because we moved some earlier to this year. We moved some more out of our hallways this summer. So that may actually change on our next round. Fire safety, he knows how much he needs for fire safety, which includes, you know, getting our inspections down for different areas. Moving down then, we don't have any in the categories two, three or four, but in category five, those are, that's our deferred maintenance when it gets down to our maintenance of the building, the hardware, electrical, interior services. You can see where we put money. For example, we have some electrical, so we know Mr. Nelson's got a project for electrical coming up this year. Interior services, that's looking at our floors. I think the last place we have will be our last major spot, I should say, not the last, is the hallway in the stall 2009, which will be coming up. And then moving down, mechanical systems, nothing, we're new there, same with plumbing, professional services and salaries. We have, we have some contracts with Yule, which is a company that works with our boilers. So we have, that, that's one. Roof systems, we just finished. And so, and the reason you see zeros for 2019 is because of the bond. They've been taking care, taking care of those areas. And then you can see some site projects, and so those are some specific things, kind of miscellaneous categories that Mr. Nelson has known items that will be going for the school. You can see we've got a couple coming. If you look, for example, building envelope, 368, you see we're looking, we're looking out, 2024, 25, 26, may need to be doing some tuck pointing or other things related. Then it could be windows, who knows what happens in these. So we adopt this every year. It's a flexible document flowing, so we can, we go through the state actually. So when we adopt this, this will go to the state, but if we need to make a revision once again, that will go to the state as well. We're moving this for approval. We actually just made some adjustments. Was that today, Ms. Becklin, or is that just the other day? Yeah, so last week, we just actually made some final adjustments on it, based on some of the things that we see coming forward.
So are we, like on the professional services and salary, are we able to code in like a percentage of like Mr. Nelson's salary?
Oh, we, we haven't been, but the answer to that is yes.
There's also a revenue page, I think the next page in your, I don't think you can print it, but the next page in your packet does have a revenue page.
So do we, we have this long-term plan, do we budget a certain amount each year? Or are these for bonds or both or...
This is part of the levy.
So the accessibility column, is that about ramps and...
Correct.
And making sure bathrooms are accessible or something. So we must be in good shape there. Our levy must be held those codes because we have nothing budgeted there. Is that...
As of now, I have no knowledge that we're lacking.
Okay, so that's a good assumption. I just wanted to...
At the same time, you know, we do have, going back to Ms. Beck on the boil up, but basically we do have revenue. So say, for example, next week's boiler just breaks. We do have a fund balance in this area. And so we could, as I mentioned, do a revision based off of that and use these funds for repairing boiler if that went down.
So if you didn't spend those funds, would they go into the fund balance?
No, they stay in this fund.
They stay in this fund.
Yeah, this is a specific fund balance for a long-term, so...
So then you gather it each year until you need to spend it?
Yes. There are two ways to do it. One, you can spend. And then...
And pay it back.
Pay it back. The other is, is the intention, the intention, as was shared with me when they first came out with this, is that you're looking forward. So in five years, we know we need to do this XYZ product, project. So instead of having to do a levy or bond, asking the community to pay for it, we've been collecting. So all of a sudden, we know the project's a $400,000 project. Well, we've been saving it, and so in year 2025, we've got the $400,000. We don't have to go out and ask for something. And we've been fortunate, we've really been building up this amount because we've been using our bonds to, financially stable in this area.
Yeah, we didn't have it in the past. I mean, we were dividend in the general fund, we needed to do something. And that was, we've done that. So we're, so we're good now. All right, so I do need a motion to approve maintenance plan.
I would make a motion to approve the long-term facility maintenance, ten-year expenditure plan.
I will second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, eight point twelve to approve the employee and faculty handbooks.
Those were sent out. I know that some correspondence with some of the board members on those. And I know that Ms. Myers was paying attention to that and made some of those changes and missed her doors. So those changes have been, we know we can be changed as advised by the board. And these, these are ones, again, this is a fluid document. So if something changes legislatively or some other federal law comes in, it'll be added into the handbook. And these are gone over, the plan is to be going over certain sections, if not the entire team, at our hall board, or hall in service.
So I need a motion.
Are we doing collectively a motion to approve both the handbooks that we saw?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee and the faculty handbooks.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Any comments from our principals? Thank you for getting up to us early and they're great.
Really appreciate the feedback, actually, really good feedback.
Yeah, my question, because I came along with it, it's good. And it's really a positive experience, I think, for both Mr. Doran and I, but especially myself, being new to it, just to review it and make some tweaks to make it kind of our document too, so that we just know the ins and outs of it.
I think it's really good to have a plan in place for regular review. That's the way those documents don't get stale.
And we saw some needs through this past year of some clarity that we need. And we added those. And then we're also following it up with some training with the staff and some forms that go along it for grants and for fundraising activities. Those were the big additions and they're not...
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Eight point thirteen to approve the 2019 Chevy Suburban vehicle purchase.
As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Nelson did a great job as far as finding a purchase or selling one of our vehicles that we did not, no longer need it. And that was purchased through general fund. And so we've taken those funds, we still need a vehicle. And so we're looking at a Suburban, nine-passenger Suburban, used for, you know, student activities, used for when multiple staff go over to Mountain Lion for trainings. That seems to be the common place. And so with those funds, and we had some other funds, we'll be able to purchase and adopt the budget. Didn't have to use too much of those with the good sale tactics that Mr. Nelson put forth. So we have a term, we have, we've got a very good rate for the seller vehicle. And so with that, we're moving forward that we'd love to purchase this Suburban.
I gave Tom, I just gave him a look at that before we were done buying vehicles.
Satin steel metallic.
Satin steel metallic.
Satin steel.
Jet black.
Jet black interior.
How long do our Suburbans generally last? Because I drive a nine-passenger Suburban, so I want to buy something.
If I can educate you really quick on type three vehicles. Okay, so you can, we can use a type three vehicle for 12 years from the day of manufacturing. Okay, that's how long we can haul students in them. We can keep them for as long as we want. But, but for students, we can only have them for 12 years. School buses, you can use forever.
So type three, Tom, I just cleared, is that just like a standard vehicle? Is that type three?
Type three is a standard vehicle.
It's a model.
Okay.
They have to go through state inspections, so they're inspected every year. So they are a school bus when we're hauling kids. They, anybody that drives them needs to be trained. They need to do pre-trip on them, so just like our bus drivers do on them. Whoever, whoever drives them needs to do the same thing. Right now, the state has changed. So we used to have our teachers, coaches drive our 14 passengers, just flip the tag activity. We can no longer do that unless we send them in for a DOT physical. So anything, so now those are type eight busts. So now we, and we use those a lot, I mean, with our sports program. So this is where that Suburban may help us out. Or we're going to have cost of now sending coaches, teachers in for these DOT physicals to, to allow them to continue to drive those 14-passenger buses. So the hope is this Suburban will take up a lot of that, we will save on having a set of teachers in for those physicals.
$103 a pop.
At least. I mean, they've gone...
Yeah, they've gone up. Yeah, I think 127.
The bill I currently have for my husband is a hundred and three dollars.
Yeah, roll the dice, I wonder when the prices come, because I've signed a couple a month that are different than that. So I don't know, unless they've standardized over there finally.
Well, that makes sense for this one, thank you.
But nonetheless, yeah, I mean, we have a lot more tracking, which adds that much more work to everybody as well.
Thank you.
So that, yeah, so that's why we're doing a lot of it.
Okay, thank you.
And the van that is sold at this point, I guess it's a point where it's not capable of accomplishing this, I guess.
It was, it was our, our handicap van. We no longer have a need for that. We still have our, our bus that will accommodate wheelchairs. So like I said, type three vehicles, you can only use for 12 years. That was a 2017 van, which we sold for $32,000. Next year, we'd be lucky to get 24, you know, so, because you lose so much in those vehicles just because of how long you can use them.
So Tom, who are, to whom are you selling these vehicles? Selling them back to dealerships or rural districts?
Now that was to Ada, Ada Boat Group, I believe, that they're out, out by...
Another school.
Western Minnesota, another school district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, I need a motion to approve the purchase.
I'll make the motion to purchase the satin steel metallic.
House. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Does it have a lift package on it?
I knew she was going to ask. I guess I knew she was going to jack it up.
Only you did. It came like that.
I know.
And we selected a Suburban rather than a cheaper minivan that could fit the same amount of people because of safety and oil drive and weather or... I chose a Suburban too, so I...
It's a four-wheel drive vehicle, but I mean, most importantly, it hauls nine, nine people.
With their supplies in the back indoors.
For example, robotics can also tow.
Oh, that's another thing I don't know about.
There you go.
Except for our 21 kids.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Our rate. Nine point zero personnel items. Nine point one to approve the resignation of head football coach, Brian Carpenter. There's a letter in our packet.
Make a motion, is that acceptable or not?
I regretfully second it.
Okay, any discussion? Like I said, the letters included in our packet.
I think I just want to thank Brian Carpenter for service to our students.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point two to approve the hire of head football coach, Mike Cram.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring Mr. Cram to be our head football coach.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
What was the hiring process like for...
Same as, same as all the others. We had a committee of, actually, I asked an extra board member to be on it, I think, because I know Brian and Mike, so I didn't want to be a voting member. So we had that posted and then we only had one applicant. That person interviewed, did very, very well, and we had a consensus with the group and, and, yep, and then ranked them, just like we would a teacher or anybody else.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point three to approve the hire of regular road driver, Jonathan Watt.
Make the motion to approve our Jonathan Watt.
House. Oh, go ahead.
House, I can do that.
Okay. Okay, discussion?
Who is Jonathan Watt?
Jonathan Watt is currently a part-time driver for us.
So we will meet several.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point four to approve the hire of Stephanie Lindstrom for the ADSIS position.
Which is?
Alternative delivery.
Systemic intervention. Yeah, it is an intervention position where we identify students that are struggling and may give them an intervention. These are special ed dollars to prevent students from being identified as a special ed student.
So is it working one-on-one with identified students? And what age students, elementary, I'm assuming?
At this time, it is a K-12. So the ADSS workers will be working with K-12 if they are needed. They'll go to a child study team where they will be identifying that student, then they can give that intervention, and it's all based on data.
And how many of these are in this position to help with our students?
We wrote the grant for two and a half positions. She will, Stephanie will be more of that lead interventionist and will be working with the other two. Currently, Sharon VR, I can't ever say her name correctly, but she is going to also be one of the ADSS positions, as she was in there last year. And she will just continue with the position that she's in. And we are also advertising for an ADSS behavior position to prevent students from, or teach students, I should say, to work on social emotional skills, behavior skills, just some, some skills building so that they can perform better in those other areas as well.
And there's a note, a letter in your, your packet, so by Stephanie accepting this position. Stephanie has been on full time, she was out on leave, and so she'd be returning to leave. And so what she's doing is, she's accepting this as a point four FDE. And so she's voluntarily doing the reduction this year, but with the intention to come back next year as a one point, one point.
Did you have a potential for this position? Because she wanted to come back part-time. She is already part of the Cook County Education Association, so we found a position that would satisfy her need and our need in this position.
So coming back.
Yep.
I do need a motion.
I make a motion to approve hire of Stephanie Lindstrom for the ADSIS position.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point five to approve hire of middle school language arts teacher, Stephen Anderson, at one point oh FTE BAA.
Now, for the next, uh, few items, there's a form, uh, the new hire kind of form that we have. And so information on each one of these candidates is provided there.
I'll make the motion to approve the hire of Stephen Anderson.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? So, he's tier four teacher, but he's placed on the salary schedule as tier one because he's new to our district. So, yes, um, the tier four is the licensure through the state of Minnesota. Um, the placement on the salary schedule is the years and experience and college credits that they have.
So is the tier one.
I guess, probably, that probably doesn't need to be there.
A type, okay, 'cause that's where I was, I was like, wow.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah.
It's BAA.
Right, so it would be like that A slot over on the, the salary schedule, that tier one. That's how I interpret that, so it should say A, maybe? Is that what you would interpret that salary schedule?
Yes.
A. Okay.
Definitely.
Correct. So that would be step.
I would have had that question for everyone else, but now I understand.
Okay. I will clarify that on future forms like this, so that it'll say the step and.
Yeah, it's like lane A, step zero, or step one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
That's how it reads. That's how it reads on the line.
It just has, it says tier one BAA, yeah, the tier one was just a, some bonus. Yeah. There we go.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point six to approve hire of middle, middle school, high school Spanish teacher, Erin Pets, at one point oh FTE BAA.
I would make a motion to approve hire of middle school, high school Spanish teacher, Erin Pets, one point oh FTE BAA slash A.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, how, how many, uh, people applied for that position?
Can we say that?
Did we talk about that? I mean, I'm just curious, did we have people?
We had more than that.
We, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, she's outside, she's, were there any internal people? No, there must not have been.
No.
Okay.
Okay. And on all of these hires, I know you said some of us, but are they all certified teachers?
Licensed teachers?
Their license or were applying for their license depending on their status.
So they're.
So in this particular case, she is a tier two Spanish teacher.
Yes, so I sent you that infographic.
Yes, and that was really helpful.
So tier one would be the former, um, community expert, right? And so there's someone who has a BA, but not necessarily, or not what we're hiring for, right? Tier two would be, um, what do we used to call it? A variance teacher, whether, so in this particular case, we have a teacher who is going through school to become a teacher and has not yet achieved everything to be a fully licensed teacher. Tier three is fully licensed, tier four is fully licensed with teaching experience, so three years' teaching experience.
Okay.
So, that infographic I sent is helpful.
I know, and I said, and I mean, a lot of, I, I printed it out, but I'm not memorizing it.
That's your assignment for next one. So theoretically, our goal is to hire people that are always tier three or tier four, even though that's a pie in the sky.
Yes.
Goal, correct.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point seven to approve hire of elementary Spanish, English as a second language teacher, Teresa Shannon, at one point oh FTE BAA plus thirty.
Make a motion to hire Teresa Shannon, elementary Spanish, English as a second language teacher.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, is she replacing somebody, or is this a new position?
No, you'd be replacing someone.
And where is this person, the office or room located?
I don't know if they have an actual office.
They don't have one, they kind of.
Oh, they can, travel.
Move, travel around.
We're gonna try to find an office for her. Um, can I clarify something on this? Uh, Teresa Shannon has multiple years. She is actually a retired teacher. And so when it says BAA, it needs to be the step E and the BA plus thirty. So just for clarification on this form, uh, she.
Your sheet, your hiring sheet has her at point five one, but this has her at one point oh, is that, is that a mistake?
The new hire says point five one FTE.
Yes, but the motion was one point oh.
The motion is one point oh.
So that's why.
Oh, it should be point five one.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So can we make that correction?
So I need, uh, did I make a wrong?
Did I say for full-time?
I didn't, I don't, I submitted it.
You didn't.
So that's what the motion is, that's written.
Oh, I didn't read that.
Would you be willing to amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to, uh, to say, uh, for.
Point five one FTE.
At point five one FTE.
And then we also have to change it to E, BA plus thirty.
To E.
So it would be step E.
Step E, BA plus thirty.
BA plus thirty, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Rita.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's fine.
Good catch.
Dan, would you be willing to?
Sorry, I didn't get that right.
Second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, so we've got amended a motion for point five one FTE, E, BA plus thirty. Okay, any discussion?
Did we advertise for this position? No, because we had our applicants, and we had, um, the applicant that was in this position took another job. We had interviewed for the Spanish position, and it opened up, but since it was for a similar position in Spanish, um, the qualifications was. So we have tier four licensed teachers available for the Spanish position that we hired at tier two.
Correct. Okay, any other discussion?
Wait a minute, I wanna think about that a little, so, so we have.
I think, I think we need to be, I think that we can't specifically talk about the applicant pool.
No, 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 I just, so.
Okay.
So what our, our, our procedure, our policy, our wish is to hire.
The best.
The best every time.
Yep.
When it happens.
Yep. And, you know, we're all familiar with the, you know, the hiring process, there's the hiring team, um, there's.
Yes, oh, I have every confidence.
We, we, you know, we rank and we all sign off, I mean, that's the process. You know, we, we follow that process every time, and so, you know, the question is, was our, was our hiring process followed? And so, you know, that's what the question is, so. I just wanna be, be careful, because there's things we can't specifically speak to.
Frankly, a good way to put it is, all kinds of variables, you know, when you're hiring. All kinds of variables, and so, I mean, I, we've had it where we've had a rock star on paper, right? And then you called references, and you're like, hmm, so, you know, there's all kinds of things that go into not just one or two variables, you know?
So, the thing I wonder, though, because it wasn't posted, is we have someone who's clearly qualified to teach Spanish, but English as a second language is an entirely different likes of shirt area. And so if we didn't advertise for us, for this position, we may have not included applicants who may have been even more stellar, that are tier four with both, or, I mean, I know this is pie in the sky ideals, but, um, so I wonder if that's maybe not the best.
Yeah.
Plan to continue it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the.
Just talking about the hiring process in general, not this.
For sure, I think, you know, having like, of that be a little bit clearer might help applicants, like, you know, in what they're, you know, they're like, if they have a clearer picture of what they're applying for, then, you know, they can have a clearer picture of like, which is where their interests lie, you know, and that could potentially help the process, you know, if that's.
And maybe that's something that we could look at, is the interview process in the future, so that we can make sure that it's clear, and, because we follow it. Um, but if there's something missing, I, I would welcome that meeting so that we can clarify it and paint it up if there's something that's a little bit too loose in there.
Great. Okay, so we have this motion, uh, for the hire of, uh, Teresa Shannon, so, um, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, nine point eight to approve high school preschool teacher Lynn Shields at one point oh BAA hourly rate.
That's correct.
I'll make the motion to hire preschool teacher Lynn Shields.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Lynn has been on staff, has she, well?
Correct.
And she was early childhood?
She was ECFE a few years ago, and this last year, she was preschool.
She's a licensure of ECFE, she's a preschool.
Hey, any other discussion?
Um, I think this story got lumped together, but I also wonder, did we advertise for an ECFE position?
Well, this is a preschool.
I know, this is, but I, I, I believe that there. I, I, I think the same concern comes up that, um, that we advertise for preschool knowing maybe that we were considering an ECFE role as well. And I wonder if there's room for improving the process going forward.
Definitely.
Sophie, as I'll go over under the, that umbrella, umbrella of early childhood. So our preschool programs, whether it's a full-day four-year-old program, or a three- and four-year-old half-day program, or ECFE, it's all under that early childhood community ed umbrella. And so when we have the applicants, um, we can offer them positions because we've interviewed them as early childhood applicants or candidates. Um, so we can offer them those positions. If they're not comfortable with the position that they're offered, they can express it at that time, and we can move to advertise it in a more specific way.
But, but, but to be ECFE or to be, you have, you have to be licensed in at least, in these areas, right?
There is, um.
I mean, there is licensure in these areas.
Correct.
There's a license for preschool teacher, there's a license for ECFE. And preschool, the difference there, um, we have, uh, preschool comes under community ed, so it's a little different. Just straight through community ed, you can, you can hire a individual with a teaching license and get them a variance, like we were talking about before. In this case, it would be teaching outfield if they have a teaching license, or, um, they need to have a child development associate's degree, CPA.
So if it wasn't operating under community ed and it was operating under the school, would they have to have a BA, or would they have to?
Um, if it was just straight on under the school, which, I'm familiar with that model, but they would need to then have a license. So if it was a volunteer, for example, if it was volunteer three K position, uh, for four-year-olds, then they would need to have a preschool license.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
She had something to say, I was, she had like a face, sorry, she looked like she was. No, we're good. I just wanted to make sure that we're following what I have from the MBE, so.
Perfect. So any other discussion on the, um, hire Lynn Shields? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Nine point nine to approve the hire of part-time preschool teacher Amanda Carlson at point five one FTE BAA hourly rate.
I'll make the motion to hire part-time preschool teacher Amanda Carlson. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So this is not a licensed teacher, she has her child development associate, associate's credential. But it's acceptable because.
Acceptable through the community.
It's a community ed program, it's not a standard teacher.
Correct.
So why does the state allow, I mean, have different standards between the, this, this, not, I'm just.
I don't, I do, I do not have that answer, but that is a, that is what they have, that's what their standard has been.
But, of course, we still are always looking for a fully licensed applicant, highest tier possible, all these things.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, and nine point ten was removed. So nine point eleven to approve hire of fall coaches as listed for football, volleyball, and cross-country, and that was a paper that we were handed here.
She, since that, we need to approve that at this meeting, since, uh, the season will start prior to our next quarter. We approved the football coach already.
Ahead, yes.
They have football coach. So the others, majority of them, I believe, are returning coaches, is that pretty accurate, majority of them? We do have a few open positions yet, um, getting harder and harder to fill spots coaching-wise, so we're still looking for a few people. Uh, something to point out as well, and Mr. Jordan and I talked about this the other day, or today, actually. Uh, if you look at cross-country and you look at the bottom two spots, um, Dan Hebel is the assistant coach in Two Harbors, I believe, you get, the board's aware that we've had a co-op with Two Harbors. Uh, Silver Bay is, uh, going to co-op, and I'm sure you'll recognize the name of the coach, Kerry Velvet, who used to be a Dan, Dan instructor here in Cook County. Is there any more to that, Mr.? Um, the co-op paperwork will be done to, you know, tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday, depending upon the data I get from Scott Ross and Kelly and Silver Bay. That goes to the high school league, and they have to, they have to officially approve it. I've been given very good verbals from the high school league and the process we have to follow, but, uh, it does not change our classification, doesn't move us up a class, so we're going against big schools. And really, it helps a lot of the kids from Silver Bay be part of a team that they normally wouldn't get to be a part of. Silver Bay, is it, Two Harbors is coming up to Cook County? Two Harbors, Cook County's going elsewhere, they'll pick up Silver Bay kids, so Silver Bay's kinda right in the middle.
Just maybe a goofy question, is seven, eight coaches, that seventh, eighth grader?
It is, correct.
Or is that seven, fifteen?
Nope.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm looking for, hopefully, be able to.
So, so then our regular football team, I'm assuming because of numbers, can have anybody in there from freshmen to seniors?
That is correct.
So usually a pretty big difference in the.
We do a lot of.
Players sizes in that age.
Do a lot of work to protect our freshmen, that's not where we wanna go, and if we ever get to a point where we, we feel like we've relying too heavy, then we have to look at alternatives.
Yes?
Yes.
Do, um, so are, how are students in the weight room during the summer, getting ready?
Our students, some of our students are in the weight room right now, getting ready. Um, we have, um, moved the OTPT to their own room, which is given, that's freed up space in that weight room. And currently, with help of the Booster Club, um, the head coaches are exploring some new, uh, apps for the phone to put everybody in kind of a.
apps for the phone to put everybody kind of on the same lifting schedule and will have increased hours with, uh, the coaches sharing time and then they'll all be able to track their devices. We're gonna start some contests between the teams, who, who's in the weight room more. And so, um, I'm very excited about this year. We have coaches that are willing to put in the extra time and I'm, uh, I would love to come back, um, at the end of each, the, the fall, the winter, and the spring, give you an update, but we're pretty excited about where that's going.
So are they using the weight room down in the Y or just, if you still use the one up here, you're doing the.
We, uh, yes, we're doing both. We're doing both. Kids are using, using the Y because we don't have a coach there twenty-four seven in the summer, so obviously that's not open all the time and, um, kids aren't in there without a coach present. We are, um, looking to add a little bit of equipment, but we got a really good start. And so, uh, it's in good shape. We're gonna put in a few things like, uh, mirrors on the wall and stuff like that. And because, um, um, you and, you approved the budget last month, well, the Booster Club will be a little bit more free to help us with some of those enhancements. So we're pretty excited about that.
I know, I know it's a little off, but we found a room for the OTPT.
We did.
Is there some equipment there getting as well?
Well, we put, we put OTPT back in the original room and, um, one thing we thought we could manage in both areas didn't work out as much and largely because, um, we have a swing, we have a swing that's big dollars. And to try to take that down and to put that up all the time was a pretty difficult thing to do.
In the OTPT?
Correct. And so that should really stay up and it's hard to have a ninth grader see a swing and keep them off of it. And so, um, really they're getting their original space back and we've got some, uh, we had bought some cabinets to keep their stuff more enclosed so those things aren't out and, um, being used inappropriately. So, because most of those items are a pretty high dollar amount.
Is that really closer to where their classrooms are?
Yes.
centrally located?
Yes.
Centrally located in the, in the elementary there by, uh.
Yeah.
Check in with.
Yeah.
And they're in the process of cleaning, so it won't be in perfect condition yet. And our teachers are here, so we're gonna let them, you know, arrange it so that it's most user-friendly for them.
Think we need to take care of those kids.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Is there any other differences on this list? Any other new people?
Well, I emailed you. I'm obviously on the list. Um, and so that's an addition. And, um, off the top of my head, you know, most people are returning. We have a few spots to fill. We lost a few people. Um, and right now we're just, we're, we're still searching. And what will happen is, uh, you know, especially in football, that's obviously that's where most of my background comes from, but a really good number, six to one, you know, six, a coach for every six players because of the contact. Um, even though we do less and less contact in today's world with practice. Right now we only have three coaches. We're looking for a fourth. Um, but right now the numbers may just come out. It just may be that kind of year where we'll be okay with three. So, um, we're not gonna add unless we find the right person. The last thing you wanna do is, like we've been talking about the hiring process, you don't just, you don't just hire somebody to hire somebody. So we gotta find somebody who works well with kids and, um, that we feel good about. So, um, we'll, uh, we'll just cross the bridge as we see it with the next two coaches.
Same, same volleyball work.
We've got a volleyball opening as well, same thing. Um, and, uh, Marley and I have been talking and she's been talking to a few people, but we don't have anybody yet. Pretty big commitment for people that work outside of the building.
And I did communicate, you know, I'm here, you know, before Mitch's email, but it, you know, concerns me to have Mitch out the building being an assistant coach, just because, you know, we've Dr. Crandall's part-time, their administrators, you know, leave them in the building. And so, um, so it, I mean, I, I'm gonna approve it, but I'm still, you know, obviously number one has to be, you know, your assistant principal duties and then, um, you know, then that, that coaching thing is, um, is gonna, I'd like to see, you know, it's gotta be the second priority. There's something happening in the building, obviously, and they're getting on the bus to leave. You know, you're gonna have to make that call, but.
Right.
I'm not concerned about it, but I know that you two work well, very well together and you've got a plan. And so I'm confident that'll work.
Actually, we had a discussion even just this afternoon and how many after-school this last year, how many events that took Mitch away after-school? And there were two specific ones that you remember that were past our, past about three thirty.
And one was before I came and the other one.
So we're fortunate that we don't have a lot of those, but when they do come up, they know that's the first priority.
And just to reassure everybody, if coaching was my premier, I wouldn't have never, I wouldn't have left it. So, I mean, I obviously stepped back from coaching to do what I'm doing and, uh, obviously, no, that's the first priority, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the assistant cook, or like, yeah, assistant coaches.
Fall coaches.
I heard all fall coaches.
All of them.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, ten point zero administrative reports, ten point one principals report, highlight item.
Uh, so this summer has been busy with all of the stuff going on in the school. Um, I've also made a lot of community connections and, um, working with different community agencies to help better our school goal, goals and the atmosphere and success reach and the respect for all. But I also wanna talk about, um, the felted forest. That's really the highlight right now because it just was installed last week. Um, and they were at the art festival and they were having different students and different attendees create felted items. So along with our timber frame, now there's an entry and a trail that goes into our woods and there are felted animals. And our summer school teachers have brought their kiddos out there and sent me pictures and it just looks like they're having this blast, like trying to find them and they're up high and down low. They, um, are allowed to touch them. They are gonna work on some clues on where different things are in case they're a little bit too hidden. Uh, but it is a great connection to our community and bringing in part of grammar rate into our school so that there's still that connection there, so.
Questions?
How big are the animals?
They vary in size.
Yeah, it's so small, more with you, are they small? Some of them are larger.
And are they colorful? So they're not like worms?
They advertise them, remember, for the tree frog.
Some of them are harder to find, some of them blend in, some of them don't blend in.
And how many are there?
So we found, we've been, we've been talking about this at Junior Vikings. The kindergarten and first graders round fifteen, but today we went there and found eighteen with my group, so.
Wow. So fascinating as well.
And it's gonna be a continued project. It's not just, um, let's install it and then be done. They'll continue adding to it and upgrading and doing those kind of things. It's just exciting.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, ten point two superintendent report, highlight item.
Well, I've got my report, so the items I wanna talk about are just, uh, big thanks to, uh, Mr. Nelson and his crew that he's been operating this summer. If you have not noted, take a walk around the school. Um, you can see obviously right out here, but if you look close, it's all been painted as well. New colors, it looks just fantastic job there. Uh, it seemed like it was, Bill, can we, uh, do another hallway? What about, what if we do this hallway as well? And so we are, we're, majority of the school, I think everything less the hallways in Sawtooth are going to be done. And so the nice pieces is that their crew was already here and established. And so it wasn't that we, oh geez, we have to bring the crew up and do all that. And so we were fortunate, they had the time and we were able to get it done. Um, actually, uh, the whole bandroom was done where they have a new floor. And then they actually, the same flooring that we're looking at in this room, carpeting on the risers. So that'll help dampen some of the sound as well. So that's gonna be real nice in there. Um, but yeah, just an outstanding job. I, they've been painting all over the place, so it looks, it looks very nice throughout the building. So just a big, um, big round of applause for that group. Also, uh, Kelly Roberts, as I mentioned, been doing great review there with the audit, but she wanted to make sure that the board was aware that, uh, it really couldn't have been done without some of the help she had. Uh, she had two young ladies, I don't have their names, uh, that did kind of like an internship uh, with her that helped out, uh, earlier in the summer. And it was, I was up there for, well, one of them was in there, just, she was great, just helping out. Uh, and also Helena Blake and Jane Rana, hope I said their names correctly, uh, have also volunteered and without them, she doesn't know if she could be able to do it as, uh, Mr. Jensen said, would be one hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty, uh, on some of the days that she's heard, so. And I know average has been seventy-five to eighty. And hats off to Ms. Myers. On Monday, we had emergency, over the weekend, you know, Kelly had an emergency, so we needed to fill in. Uh, Ms. Myers along with.
But you're hearing it now.
Nelson and a couple of the other folks.
Thanks.
Pam was up there helping, making sure everything going, but, uh, uh, we still operated our, our lunch program. So Julie Nelson, hats off to her for coming in and, uh, taking the bull by the horns and making sure that was there and then. Actually, I called Ms. Myers while she was there, there was all these people down here. So she called me back. Yeah, so just, uh, some neat things going on with the, the summer program and obviously, like I said, the, the building. I think the kids are gonna really like it as long, as well as the staff, come back to, you know, a real fresh look throughout the building.
Do we have pictures?
Uh, some. The, the biggest part is the, the floor out here, but pictures of.
Do we have pictures to post for the community?
We will get those on that app rollout. They will be posted.
And how's that little app going for our communication?
Oh, you were, oh, you missed that. They're gonna do a rollout on the twenty-sixth.
It's coming down.
They're gonna be getting trained next week, the, kind of the lead folks. And so on the twenty-sixth, it's gonna be a big rollout and, you know, during our open houses, folks will be able to find out. And they can get it downloaded right then and there and, uh, see how they can operate, you know, what kind of information they wanna know. But we're gonna get that, get that out in the community and then as some of the other things that we talked about, we need to broadcast all the great things, our great staff and what they've done with our kids. They, you know, our summer school program, our felt forest, um, AP scores, you know, lots of things.
Yeah, I, no.
Preschool and hair and ads.
A picture of Ms. Myers serving lunch on our community site says a lot about our school values, I think, kind of like we mentioned, our donation that covered.
Oh.
Not paid school lunch. Um, and that was like sixteen hundred dollars, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's, it's a significant amount. That somebody thought just feeding our children was that important and that nobody gets turned away, you know, and whatnot. And I think the school lunch program, these things seem small compared to the big bond items and whatnot, but I think that they're the most important things that really talk about the values of our school, the hard work that our administrators put in, um, and that they, it's not, it's not about just the numbers, even though that's important. It's about the students and how we provide the best experience for them.
And it's about our community that supports our students.
Yes, right.
You know, it's all about, it's, it's a community here greater than anywhere, any other parts of this Cook County community. The school community truly is focused on one thing. There's no divisions there. And so, and it's, it's obvious that everyone has, has their goals.
And it's really fun to see. I, I missed Ms. Myers. I'm sorry she didn't feed my kids, but we were there when Pam was in there. And seeing Pam not as the face of the district office, but just joking with my kids, it was a whole new side of Pam. Really care about our students. And I think that that's just an important message.
Anything else? I need a motion to approve at six forty-five.
To adjourn?
To adjourn, I'm sorry. Adjourn.
To approve adjournment.
Approve adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn at six forty-four. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We have some things to sign. Rena, Dan.